The E C Council to order, if you could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our very post poll meeting from last week. Election day, we could not have it, so here we are. Casey, would you please call it all? Councilmember Al Forsman.
Here.
Paul Kess.
Here.
Jerome Belts.
Here.
Ryan Cowan.
Here.
Angela Campbell.
Here.
Adam Missweet.
Here.
And Dara Merson. I am here. We have a full council, so we have a course. We can move on as scheduled. I need a motion to approve our minutes from October fifteenth, our regularly scheduled council meeting. Moved by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any additions or omissions to the agenda this evening, councilor? Any? Seeing none? I will go ahead with a quick mayor's report. First off, we heard earlier that we had amazing turnout for the election, so kudos to everyone in Ely. Good job. Ninety-five percent turnout?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent turnout, there you go. It was just a few minutes ago, so clearly my memory is awesome. The end of October, mid-October, which is the last time we had our scheduled council meeting, was right after that, I went to go see the movie Bounder Wires, which was scheduled here in Ely, or built here in Ely. And I know Nick walked into a really good article on it. I was invited, and it was, it's an amazing movie. I was very impressed with it. It should be playing here, hopefully it'll be playing here, but it was amazing and fun to see. And as Nick has pointed out over in Oregon, it did bring a lot of revenue into Ely, so if you get a chance to see it, I highly recommend it. It's pretty heavy material, but nothing is really shown, but I enjoyed seeing some of my kiddos that I taught in it and seeing a lot of familiar places. So I know now the movie's just wrapped up, so it's a surprising source of revenue for Ely, but it's always fun to see familiar places. The other thing, I'd like to quick a report. I saw an email about this, and I'm not sure how well the public knows about this, and I just thought, you know, we, by having our fancy rest stop that's coming into the Trailhead, has had support at A T V for quite a long time, and I would be very remiss because Ron Potter has done a lot for trails up in Ely, and he was just recently named to the N O H B C C Hall of Fame for twenty twenty-four, which is the National Off-Highway Vehicle Conservation Council. And that's a, that's a pretty big honor, and I would be, I just think that we need to be aware of that and just kudos to him for doing that and for everything that he has done all along to make sure that A T V continues to be an important part of our economy. So those are the only two things that I have, but I'm glad that we're back together and we can continue to visit and proceed with that. I'm waiting for a motion to win our reasons in their entirety this evening. Moved by Adam, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There are no requests to appear, so we'll go ahead and go into our committee reports. H P C, do you have anything?
I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
The minutes are in the packet. If there are any questions, just let me know.
Okay, go ahead, put your question.
Angela, under old business P, the historic State School Sure, there's a comment there that the city to reserve twenty-five hundred in budget spending authority for use in twenty twenty-five. I haven't seen that through the Budget Committee, I just don't remember. I'm trying to develop some knowledge of this, but...
Yes, I'd have to look. I know there's some work that was started, or maybe this is referencing that work that wasn't completed, or we'll take a look.
In any case, they're expecting, I mean, it hasn't been built into the legislature yet, they have until the end of December to modify it. Of course, that involves balancing somewhere else.
I'll check with the chair. Let me get back to, back to her. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you think I'll say Angela?
No.
All right. Moving on to planning and zoning.
Okay, it's a long agenda. Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments, this is just a matter of information. Board of Adjustment approved a conditional use permit application submitted by Tanner Spicer, representing Voyager North Outfitting and T and Acid Venture Properties LLC. Proposed location, one fifteen North Twenty-first Street. Avenue E, Parcel, zero-three, zero-zero-two-three, zero-zero-zero-zero-eight-six. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of the property as a resort with four-hundred-ninety-nine square foot log cabins, up to three RV sites, as well as green space and other amenities for resort guests. The property's own residential transition and resorts are allowed by conditional use permit only, per ordinance three-seventy-six, second series. That's just a matter of information. I can go on now. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to approve to change the language in the R O W vacation process to the October fifth, two thousand and four procedure and remove the E language and for the fee to be included in a current fee schedule. That's a recommendation.
Is there a motion? Is there support for that motion? Support by Al? Any discussion? Go ahead.
And when we discussed the fees, we also discussed the costs associated with it, and those would also have to be in there. Is that included in this recommendation here? Or, Carol, maybe?
Why not?
I believe the intent is to revise that language to have all fees reference the current fee schedule, because yes, there was a fee for the conditional use, or there is a fee for the right-of-way vacation reference, and it'll just reference the schedule. So that'll include legal fees and other survey and those types of fees that we've seen on these right-of-way vacations, so that should all be, that'll circle and then reference the fee schedule.
The change in fees, because it says here it's one hundred and seventy dollars for the processing request.
It would be what was discussed at the study session as a fee schedule, and that will be approved in January. I can't recall. Three hundred, I believe. That was revised as well.
Steven?
It was just a few weeks ago when we discussed it, and our memories are all pretty dark then.
I haven't, no. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the Streets and Infrastructure Committee mentioned in this procedure. Information I'm removing back from the...
No. Right-of-ways aren't intended for public use, for public utilities, so when somebody requests a vacation, typically the first step is for projects and planning and zoning to look at it to ensure that that piece of public dedicated right-of-way isn't used or needed for future infrastructure, or to make sure there isn't infrastructure currently in that place. So that is the intent of a right-of-way vacation, is to have that review prior to it going forward for actual vacation. So many times a request will come forward before it even gets to the point of legal looking at it or surveying or any of that work being performed, both planning and zoning and projects will look at it to look at if it's something within the best interest of the community to actually even consider vacation on its own.
Alan, I'm hoping.
Sure. And I think if I understood Adam correctly, are we saying that Streets and Infrastructure Committee and the Projects Committee are being used interchangeably? Was that kind of a question? They refer to it as Streets and Infrastructure in this thing, but I think that's projects.
Yeah, those two committees and the Land Committee were combined probably a decade and a half ago, so. That was my question.
Great minds, that's all. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to have the council explore ways to fund a potential D pay incentive.
Is there support? Support? Go ahead, Paul. Discussion. Go ahead, Al.
Yes, this is one of those things that when you look at the properties in our, especially the commercial properties in our community, it's really irrelevant. There just isn't a space where this makes sense, and as far as, you know, spending time looking for a funding mechanism for something like this, I just, I can't see it. There is, there is the incentive, and you've seen it, where people are doing things like, you know, the pocket park and putting in, people want to beautify their properties, but I don't think that this is anything that the city wants to get into, and I'm actually opposed to this, so.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
I would disagree with that. It looks like the incentive is not paid by the city. I think anything we can do to reduce runoff is probably a good thing. That runoff and caves, parking lots, excuse me, no matter how big, I think that saves us the trouble sometimes of processing that water.
Country, Stephen, I think that if you have an unpaid parking lot and it's gravel, which is actually suggested in this suggestion here, that gravel ends up coming down into our storm sewer system and actually plugging up the storm sewer, so creating more of an issue than it is. So while I certainly agree with paved and curved parking lots and allowing green space in there where you're directing the water away, but when the incentive here as written is simply to depave and not, there's no recommendation for directing the water, and the gravel is actually going to create more problem, and gravel isn't impervious. I mean, gravel is almost as impervious as pavement, so, well, green space is different than that. If you've got a parking lot, you're not saving anything by trying to pave it unpaved.
Let's go with Carol.
Just to add a little bit to this, the rain garden piece of this is for stormwater management. We actually, on our more recent project, Trailhead, we actually have an underground sedimentation basin that was constructed on that project as part of the infrastructure that went in a few years ago. On a lot of these lots, as Al was referencing, some gravel lots in town, all the water does still sheet off of them. It is typically still impervious of aggregate based compacting, is not a pervious pavement per se, as is described in here. So the thought would be, if something was to be depaved, and we really don't have anything out there right now, but to promote folks when they are developing their property to include rain gardens. So it's not really, to me, there's not really, I don't know what an incentive to depave would look like, because to your point, there really isn't a lot of opportunity, but as people are doing their projects, kind of green field projects, or even brownfield redevelopment of previously improved properties, including some green space and some rain gardens, you know, would be infiltration basins, and not typically depaving in the sense of removing blacktop off the street, off the side of a parking lot, because that would typically cause more issues for our storm sewer system and more sedimentation and suspended solids than just a parking lot that would be paved. So just to add a little clarity, that's kind of what is being discussed here. As far as payment or incentive, I don't know what that would look like. I think most people that are doing projects that have stormwater requirements for punting, they are looking at doing an infiltration basin. In fact, like the Shoppo project, Resaux's, the basins that are thrown in that property, that's what they are. They're infiltration basins that are catching all that water off of those paved surfaces and off the gravel, gravel edges and the alley and directing it better.
As much as I look forward to the community this with all of the next half hour, so I just want to point out that this is a voluntary kind of thing, and it isn't just with impervious surfaces, it's replacing with new plants, rain gardens, plumbing, that kind of stuff, so I can support that. About half hour of that?
No, a few seconds. Anybody else? A couple of points I'd like to make. The application that we have in our packets from Staples Park Minnesota, which is fine, so we're not Staples Park Minnesota, however, the other thing is it takes priority with people who are in, I forget the exact term, economic environmental justice areas, is that's what the term? Environmental justice priority area, so I'm not sure if we're in that area or not.
We're not.
So we might get a disagreement. There are those things. All right. So all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Moving on. Right. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning to approve the development agreement with Depot on Central LLC.
Is there support? Support by Jerome, discussion? Go ahead, Jerome.
I really understand, of course, I grew up in the city, so if they're going to try to go make the building and stuff look like they did in the old days when it was there, is that quite to the, is that quite what you understand?
The Depot project?
Yes.
Yeah, the Depot is a historic restoration of the Depot, an improvement upon the property. This area, and this development agreement is the area along Minor's Drive, head of the area that I can see the power line and all the junk on it that now has been removed, so that's the development agreement is, they agreed to continue their project, to restore the building, bring it into usable standard in exchange for this piece of property, and then they're giving us the old Ford garage back, which...
Are we going to get a grant here?
We can do it.
What about Raynor?
There will be, I guarantee it.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Recommendation from Planning and Zoning to approve the changes to the second-hand goods dealer ordinance as presented in to direct attorney Coon to update the ordinance. That's a recommendation.
Is there a second? Second by Adam, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Recommendation from Planning and Zoning to update City Code eleven point forty-one two in the shoreline over Lake District surrounding Miners Lake, the property owner shall be responsible for assuming the land is safe to build on at the property, let's see, at the seventy-five foot or greater setback. It shall be the responsibility of the property owner to consult with the geotechnical engineer if the property owner deems necessary. Properties known to be suspected of having inactive mine shafts shall contact the St. Louis County Mine Inspector's Office for further guidance and requirements, and to have attorney Coon work on updating the ordinance. That's a recommendation.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, discussion? Discussion. Seeing none. Can we tell if all of us just agree about having an update? All right, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation from Planning and Zoning to approve the updated dumpster enclosure ordinance to see a caption, chapter ten of the City Code, and to have the city attorney work on updating the ordinance. That's a recommendation.
Is there support? Support by Jerome, discussion? Go ahead, Al.
And this one here, if you were to take the way that's written here, and you went down the alley from this facility down this central avenue, there wouldn't be one building that would comply with this. And so they would not be able to update their properties, because they're not going to get a permit to do any renovations or that without updating their thing. There isn't the ability in these alleys to comply with this ordinance that the, instead of making an ordinance that does not fit with the majority of our properties, this needs to be completely different. There's already coverage of this in the light code, and that there's no reason to have this inherent with this. I again will reject this, the way it is written.
Were there any discussion? Al?
I look forward to another half hour. I'm supportive of it. I'm supportive of it also concerns.
Anything else? All those in favor? Anything else? Go ahead.
Okay, so when I was reading this, the requirement for compliance was, if they updated, is that what I'm understanding now?
Or so.
Or so.
Or building.
Go ahead, Carol.
I think if we were talking about green space development, it lends itself the opportunity to develop a dumpster enclosure, but to councilor Forsman and Kess's concern, it makes it difficult in already developed areas. As far as setback from buildings, what enclosure may be constructed of, I think maybe sanitation could take a look at this too. I know it wasn't all that long ago, we were, had a lot of discussion about actual dumpsters and garbage cans, and, you know, that was resolved pretty much at that time. So I think part of the concern here has been animals getting into dumpsters, and whether or not businesses are keeping their dumpsters secure from trespassers and, you know, things getting thrown on top of the cans, that sort of thing. So I, it's up to the council here whether or not it's allowed, but it would certainly go back to planning and zoning for more consideration as to what exactly, where exactly this would need to be followed in areas that, as we discussed, are going to be very difficult to enforce. If a business sells, a new business owner comes in, and we are a storefront that pretty much takes up the entire lot, then what's the answer solution?
If I recall correctly, and just remind you, doesn't sanitation already have this written down, or do they not? Sanitation?
This is your...
Yes, no.
We have it written down, not like this, obviously. Yeah, there's way to address having a secure storage and aesthetically pleasing storage of your rubbish.
And so it seems to me like there just needs to be some added language, the, you know, weighting of requirement, if it's just not feasible in the property type. So I, I agree with that, but sending it back.
Anyone else? Anybody else want to?
So are we?
Sending it back?
We're moving the motion to proceed, and then?
What do you want it to, do you want to keep, do you want to report with it, do you want to send it back? Do we want to?
A motion, send it back.
A motion?
I want to know.
I think we need to vote up for that, and then decide particularly, from my understanding. All those in favor?
It's an ordinance, I think.
Well, it's an ordinance. Not yet. No, we're still talking about, we're still going to update it right now, so, yeah. Also in favor about sending it to attorney Coon? Would I? Al against?
No.
No.
All right. But we'd like to at the Sardonic table. Go ahead, motion to send it back to planning and zoning? You make that motion, Jerome? Is there support? Supported by Adam? Is there anything in particular we want him to take or leave yet? Well, that's what I'm asking. What do you want, what do you want them to do with it?
That is what I'm hearing.
What?
I think I'm hearing to leave it as it is.
Do you want it to be that as it is and would, and make sure that Earl Kate would take a look at it, sanitation is already recommended?
I agree with it.
Would that be?
I really appreciate the direction that this is going, what they have in mind here, because I do see trash going around the city, including right into my own yard and the yards of others, especially recently with the holidays. I'd say send it back. I like the idea of the enclosure, which is not making it mandatory and having the ability to waive the requirement if there's properties that cannot accommodate the requests, it's up to me. I think that's a fair point, and I think if we, if something comes up, well, I'm going to have to, have to do this before whatever comes in, and test it with us and see if it's really, it's going to hurt them badly, or how would it affect everybody.
Considering that you don't really live in a, in a commercial area, I doubt that there's a lot of commercial trash that's coming your way, so the commercial enclosures, I think, have very little to do with any trash that's going around your property.
I'd give it up in the holiday.
All those in favor? Sending it back? Or sending it back to our...
Motion to send it back?
Sending the motion, Jerome and Adam? Yep. Send back to the D. All those in favor of sending it back? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Go call, or do you have it? All right. Moving on, budgets.
We have a recommendation from the Budget Committee to approve using positive paid check and A C H fraud detection services with France of Bank for fifty dollars per month, and although this says point zero three cents per check, I think they mean three cents per check.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Park and Rep.
Yes, I have a recommendation from Park and Rep. to La Mirada, Minnesota, Camp to Whiteside Park on June sixteenth, two hundred and eighteen, twenty twenty-five. That's motion.
Is there support? Is there support? Support by Jerome? Discussion.
Have we, haven't we done this one back one time?
Yes. From my understanding, it was a very successful event, if I remember correctly.
It was a success.
It was a successful event. But, Al?
Mayor, is it correct that the organizing of this event...
Mayor, the, uh, is, is it correct that the organizers of this event will, will be able to provide, uh, showers and sanitation for their, uh, the participants in this event? Thank you.
That's my understanding, they have one pass, I just?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's my understanding that, uh, they've, uh, had communication with the school and were using school facilities.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Quick question. Um, so at the end of the Park and Rec minutes, because this is public information, I'm sure there's a lot of people wondering, um, if you could explain at the end, it says there is a unanimous consensus regarding the failure of the city to provide the board with sound budget, a desire for clarification and justification. Could you please explain what that means?
Yes, um, and those are currently the approved minutes, but at the end of the Park and Rec meeting, um, there was consensus that, um... It appears as though the board's hands are tied as far as being allocated a budget for, from which they could operate, make decisions on park development, um, or various other areas in which they feel that they have the sound judgment to appropriate votes for certain expenditures, and that they feel limited in their capacity to function as a board without, without that, that ability. And so it's very frustrating to, to try to, to try to make decisions on, um, on certain, uh, goals or objectives without having earmarked, uh, amount of money in order to support those, those goals and endeavors.
So currently, if I'm wrong, anybody can please, um, but Park and Rec is, because I've heard it quite well, um, is an advisory board, which means they advise. So they essentially, essentially don't feel like it to, to, to help with that. Um, and the other piece to a lot of this is that you do know what the budget is because you approve the whole process of budget. So what you do is you plan out what you want, because you're in the head of goals, and you work toward those goals, keeping in mind whatever you have and you move forward. So I find this a little disappointing, to be perfectly honest, that, um, that we are at the very end of our budgeting process. We've had to cut a lot of things on budget, um, and watching that, it's been a very painful process. And then to, to hear that there's a consensus that, that you need clarification and justification. You're, you sit up here with us, you've helped us with this whole process, you've approved this whole process as far as I can recall. So I, I find this disheartening, isn't even worth it. I would sleep over budget. I would, I, that's just the nicest way to put it. The, the balance between how much can we raise levy in a community, in a city, that has, um, low income housing, low income residents to, to this? And it, it's, it's very hard for me. I mean, my heart and soul is in a lot of this, and, um, I'm not sure how to balance that out, this statement out with other things, um, especially putting it out there so publicly, I guess.
Sure.
Um, I feel like there's better ways to, to go through some of this. Are you? I don't know if anybody else wants to comment, but, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it was discussed, so I did have to record it in minutes, and I think you just provided the clarification that we're looking for. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Al and Paul.
Just to expand on what you, you were saying, I, I, I think my, my understanding would be that, that as an advisory board, um, you know, the, the, um, homeless, or, or their, their goal would be to, to help plan, plan the future of, of the parks. And as, as they do that, if there are things that do require, um, funding, you know, that you would put them, try to, you know, present them to the council to be, um, included in the next year's budget, you know, during, during budget time. It's not, not, uh, obviously November, twenty twenty-five set. Um, but, but that is, they're called, present, present things that, that may need to be addressed and, and see if the council would, would get behind them. Um, but, but for, for them to say have a, a budget and go ahead and, and them being the ones deciding where they're, they're going to do that with help, and the council authority, that, that's backwards. So, so, yeah, it, it, everything moves at the speed of, uh, um, city government, and it takes a while for, for things, things to happen, so that's my, that's my take, Adam.
Yeah, I think it's worth pointing out too, that a lot of the parks and recreation activities that the city does not are included in the public works budget, and maybe we review the things that we already do and pay for, re-budget for, and pay for, would make the parks and recreation a little more aware of the range of budget than we do for the parks and recreation. Just not obvious maybe on that page.
Right, exactly, and I think it's, it's, um, eliminating some of the ambiguity in how that, how that process takes place, and I think Al did a great job at swimming that as well. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, EUC.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve the check felt quote from Quality Flow Systems for the Mindot lift station for two thousand one hundred dollars. That is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, discussion?
I, I will just point out that, uh, it is, uh, common for the, uh, uh, EUC to, uh, name lift stations by the neighboring property. It doesn't belong to Mindot, and, and you'll also, uh, at times see residence things in here. It doesn't belong to them, it's just near their property, so, um, avoid any confusion. I'll throw that out there.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a hundred and sixty dollar residential CIP rebate to eleven oh one East Conan Street, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Discussion?
Sure, I'll recommend, I will gladly recommend, uh, looking into energy star rebates and, and, uh, conservation improvement, uh, uh, rebates that you can get to the city when it's time to update your appliances and such. Um, make energy efficient improvements, contact the court's office and see if these types of things, uh, if there's rebates available for them, if, if that's what you want.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a thousand dollar payment to Mick Schuster for his A operator services for August and September, and that is a motion.
Support? Support by Angela, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a three thousand forty dollar payment to R and B Environmental Laboratories for toxicity testing, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Adam, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else from the EUC? Is that everything?
That's it.
That's it, all right, moving on to TAB.
Okay, we have a motion from TAB to pay a hundred ninety seven dollars and sixteen cents invoice number TV and electronics service for the attempt to repair of a camera and to have a camera reevaluated globally. That's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Adam, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Um, secondly, we have a recommendation from TAB to authorize purchase of video camera for filming remote events for a cost not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars, and that's a motion.
Is there support? Support? Support by Adam, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And thirdly, um, there's a recommendation from TAB to pay each area television a hundred seventy-five dollars for additional filming for invoice number six one four one seven, and that's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Paul, any discussion? Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else from TAB?
No.
Employee relations.
Employee.
Okay, go.
Um, recommendation from employee relations who have approved the open enrollment of employee health and mental using blue cross, blue shield, and sunlight. And that's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other community reports? Any other community reports? Seeing none, we will move on to departmental reports. So.
Uh, within the packet was a, was a bid for concrete privies for the prospector's loop trail system. We are the fiscal agent on an I triple R regional trail grant that will fund this project, and it will also be matched by, uh, some other funds that St. Louis County is holding for the project. Uh, we had posted this for quite some time, this is our sole, uh, vendor that submitted a proposal.
Need a motion? Motion moved by Ryan, supported by Angela, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The trail, thank you. Anything else there?
I just wanted to add, at today's I triple R meeting, uh, the city nearly was awarded a five hundred thousand dollar grant for our twenty twenty-five infrastructure projects, which includes the waterline project in Burnside, uh, and also La Conne and Harvey Street project. So a small piece to a very large puzzle, uh, funding for those projects, but that was good news.
It's very good news. Eric.
All right, good evening. Uh, since the last time we met, um, you can fire this kind of the thirty one local calls and brief fire calls, um. Those fire calls involve, um, line downs, communication line down here in Bowling Alley. Uh, we responded to another utility call from Howard, this one was, uh, for a man named Patrick. And so we spent a little time down there helping with that, uh, helping with that incident. You know, we also responded, just last week, to a hazardous materials call that involved a large amount of fuel, uh, in a local president's basement. It wasn't supposed to be the basement, it was supposed to be the fuel, it wasn't supposed to be a large item. Um, and that's it, I will have a quarterly summary for you by the next meeting. Happy to stand for your questions.
Any questions?
Library director.
Hi, we've got some great new things coming up at the library. Um, our November packets I have talked to about, the take and make this year is a pie craft for November, and the spice for November is savory. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday the thirteenth, starting at two P M., we will be having a library scientist program on gravity. On Thursday the fourteenth, starting at three P M., and running through Tuesday the nineteenth, we have a Kahoot on the boxcar children books, number four through six. So of course our online trivia games, so if you're interested, let us know and we'll sign you up. On Tuesday, November nineteenth, at one thirty P M., we will be having a curiosity cohort, um, and we'll be looking for those upcoming holiday meals on great ways you can fold napkins and your table will look wonderful and beautiful. Um, I've always, I feel like I miss, um, almost all of our programming is funded by friends of the library, so this time I just wanted to say, even though I don't say it most times, say thank you to the friends, if you know friends of the library because they found all our great stuff. And I also have to mention that Friday this week and Monday next week, um, we will be close to the public for re-carpeting sections of the library. Today is exactly ten years to the day that we opened our doors in the new building, um, and in ten years, we're all carpeting in places. So, um, on, on Friday, you will see staff moving around in the building, and luckily the public works people are going to help us out for a little while to some of the really big stuff. And then, um, over the weekend, we've got the carpet replacement scheduled, and then on Monday, we will be doing everything that we've moved out of the way back. So, um, we will be back on Tuesday, and you can come in and take a look and see how close with the new color, which we tried as the best we could to match, see how closely it does match. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions for, uh? Congratulations on ten years.
Thanks, well, congratulations to the community on ten years.
Wow, can't believe, I still can't believe.
Um, nothing tonight, other than just a reminder, calendar parking is in effect. Um, I know we do have, well, I guess we have a meeting next week, but all of it, I'll pass on to your loved ones if they're coming up to visit. That's all I got.
City attorney is not here, step right past her. City attorney is not here. Communications, we have quite a few. Um, the annual meeting for, um, newly opened state community hospital is in our packets. And if you want to, make sure you'll print, uh, Ram's annual meeting on December nineteenth, for what he was asking. Um, and then the community resource, their quarterly progress report, sort of three, is also in our communications. Does anyone want to comment on any of those, or have any questions?
Hey, if I could, the annual meeting, keynote speaker is Wolf Weber from the NRI. I can tell you that'll be an interesting, uh, presentation. We don't know anything about NRI or the treat there. I think the impact that their work on the regional economy is, is significant. The other thing that we might want to pay attention to is, uh, there's, um, movement in, within Rams and within NRI to, uh, create a hydrogen economy, and there is federal and state proposals to do that directly. So that'll be new at the, at the meeting as well, maybe more incentive, keep up your, right, uh? You know it? Yes? Okay, good one. I, I, I thought you should, I thought we should all.
That's good.
Thanks.
Moving on, plans for payments. One at a time or all three, so? You motion? Jerome?
So we'll plan for payment A, B, and C.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
Um, number three talks about tabling the invoices until we get back to town.
Oh, there you go.
So we're not actually printing any invoices, you can just table them?
Just table, so. All right, can we take a step back then? Just three, one and two, and then table and fire.
The way those invoices work is we have to submit them to St. Louis County for their share through, um, through, uh, grant funds at the air of interest. So then, once we receive that, then we submit, uh, the check to them, so just roll up there.
All right, so A, A and B and table and C. Can we do that all in one motion? Why not? Breaking all of Robert's rules today. All right, any other discussion? Go ahead, Al.
Not directly related, but I, did we, uh, um, group the E D C R payment? Uh, number ten C? We, we discussed Rams, I thought we, oh, yeah.
Do we really approve that payment? I thought it was kind of a?
Oh.
That was, yes. That was just the progress report. It's just a progress report.
Oh, that's just progress, okay, thank you.
Even though. Thank you, though. You don't have to help.
We still didn't discuss.
Well, I asked. We did not discuss.
They did, they just did it in a?
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other discussion, and any mistakes I may have made today? The whole world can hear, because it's probably, you know, but Al will take you. Anybody up here too? Any other discussion? Any other discussion for ten to ten minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Old business, there is none, moving on to new business. Um, grants, nominations, or the board of directors, Paul.
Several on the, uh, shortage of their land, and several vacancies and vacancies in the Rams board. There'll be several other vacancies announced as well, I'll, I'll make total, you know, figure that out quite early. Um, and the, the seat doesn't belong to the city. We nominate somebody, and then they're elected at the end. So it moves us to nominate someone.
at the end, and so it moves us to nominate someone to fill that seat. In that sense, I want to nominate Angela Campbell, uh, to, for consideration to the RAB's board.
Or that.
Or that. Any other discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none? We nominated Angela Campbell for that seat. Is that okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, council. Angela has been, um, just for a little background information to the public, Angela has been Paul's, um, alternate for, for quite a while, so. Sometimes you should, you should go together, and then sometimes, and then separately, and separately, depending on the situation, so. It works very nice. Moving on, um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-two, resolution of the city dealey, CDVG, application to the twenty twenty-five infrastructure improvements, the current projects for the Harby Street project, I need a motion. Moved by Ryan, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Please call the roll. Councilmember Al Porson?
Yes.
Okay. Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Orson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, council. Moving on. Consider developing a subcommittee for the Ely Green Team for the Green Step Initiative. Eight, as we create, total members with seven voting, one council rep, one projects rep, one EUC rep, four at-large representatives, and one non-voting zoning administrator. Majority members would be sitting in residence. The Green Team would be in the lead quarter. You know, more. Move by all, supported by Adam, any discussion? Go ahead, we'll start.
Let me ask Carol to give us some context to this.
Sure. This is the next, uh, step in the Green Steps program. You know, I've been around step two, uh, as a state green steps, which is recognized by the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, so to get to our next step, uh, is the formation of a committee. Uh, a lot of it has to do with documenting the things that we're already doing. Uh, one of the big things is actually the ten years of the library, uh, and the story that that can tell with the amount of energy that was saved in that facility. As I just jokingly kind of said to Rachel, uh, over the last ten years, how many Steelys did you have? Maybe zero, as that was a major problem in the old facility. So, a lot of what that committee will be doing is working on those next steps, uh, accomplishing that to become the next, uh, level three, level four, you know, we want to continue that, that progression through the Green Steps program. And on the way, there's opportunities with energy efficiency, with recycling, with other things that, uh, we can take advantage of by incorporating this committee as a subgroup of projects committee. Along the way, if, uh, there's ideas or recommendations that come, uh, those will be then coming through the projects committee, uh, which, uh, you know, members of the city council are on that committee as well, so that's all that will come forward, so.
Adam?
So, the way this reads, the council representative would be a voting member?
It seems so. I, um, when I was on the lead, I used to be a part of this, not, not necessarily just a part of it. I am most certain that we, I think there's six or seven steps, how we probably qualify or almost all of them, but we just don't do the paperwork for it, we just have not done it. So, it's more documentation than anything else. Go ahead, Paul.
I heard that there was some interest from Parks and Rec to be part of this process. Will they have a chance to review or have input into the workings of this subcommittee?
Well, the open meetings, um, this is all the, you know, will be posted in open meetings, so, um, also there's the ability for the council to appoint the Park and Rec liaison to, uh, Green Team as well. Councilor Rizby is the, is the liaison to the Park and Rec committee, so, just kind of way to take care of both of those places.
Second, when will be your, when will be your end of appointment? January?
Yeah, I would say we'll post this in the paper and then take nominations through December, by the end of January, uh, the first meeting being sometime through January in the first quarter, so.
Thank you, man.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye, set up?
Aye.
Opposed? Amazing, thank you. All right, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-three, resolution authorizing application for Jake Forsmore Memorial Scholarship to apply for a raffle permit. Is there motion? Moved by Jerome, supported by, um, Ryan. Jessup, does something to add?
I do. Um, so, uh, just, just for clarity, I will point out that I, I am, uh, the president of the Jake Forsmore Memorial Scholarship, and while I do not benefit directly from having this raffle, I will go ahead and vote on this, but for, for, to be open, I, I will make that, uh, well-known.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Casey, please call the roll. Councilmember Al Porson?
Yes.
Paul Cass?
Yes.
Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Orson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, you have. Consider the residential rehab loan application for Linda and Chris Bender, Brandon Brendan, for up to ten thousand dollars at eight forty-five St. Patterson Street for new pro papers pending proper paperwork and fees to direct attorney who to work with applicant and proceed with the loan application. Any motion? Motion moved by Angela, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider the commercial renovation loan application for Jim Neely for seventeen thousand dollars at one twenty-five North Central Avenue for new electrical service for retail space, three apartments, and storage areas pending proper paperwork and fees, and to direct attorney who to work with the applicant and proceed with the loan application. Any motion? Moved by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And change order number one for the Ely Regional Trail Hypothetically. Any motion? Moved by Ryan, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposal for additional archi, additional architectural and engineering, engineering services amendment number one for the Ely Fire Department apparatus building. Any motion? Motion by Ryan, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Proposal for the additional architect, architectural engineering services amendment number one for the Ely Area Ambulance Service Garage Design CD and DE. Any motion? Moved by Jerome, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Go ahead, Al.
Carol, will this also have to be approved by the joint powers?
Yeah, well, correct. Well, as, as soon as we have a meeting, right now, it's about getting the design completed, uh, it was this work to get it to that next step, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-four, resolution authorizing application for Ely Blue Line Club to apply for a raffle permit. Moved by Jerome, supported by Al. Any discussion? Seeing none, Casey, please call the roll. Al Porson?
Yes.
Paul Cass?
Yes.
Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Orson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, you have. Resolutions twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, resolution authorizing the application of the Knights of Columbus Council thirty-two thirty-eight to conduct bingo. Any motion? Moved by Adam, supported by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none? Councilmember Al Porson?
Yes.
Paul Cass?
Yes.
Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Orson?
Yes, we have a big call.
Thank you. All right, consider the temporary liquor license for Northern Lakes Arts Association on December fifth, twenty twenty-four, at Kinnon Valley Chalet. Any motion? Moved by Jerome, supported by Paul. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And the first reading, ordinance three eighty-two, in ordinance of the city of Ely, Minnesota, adding to the Ely Seacoat Chapter Five, Section five point four one, alcoholic beverages, licensee, and regulation. Sale on sale time. Moved by Al, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Please call the roll. Councilmember Al Porson?
Yes.
Paul Cass?
Yes.
Jerome Bell?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Orson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, with that, we have gone for agenda, we have checked our business, and we are adjourned. No, I'm sorry, we're going to go forward. No? All right. All right. Thank you all, we are adjourned, have a lovely evening.